Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Wilson County. This is Court. Today's date is Monday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. It is nine o'clock AM. And for the minutes, we do have one, a full court present. Before we begin, we're gonna have a prayer by Elder Brown.
Precious Father, we thank you again for the privilege we have of serving you and other guided, directed, and overviewing these affairs today. We ask that you'll be with the families of the Commissioner and the judges that passed away, give them the comforts that they need, knowing that you are by their side and holding their hand. Again, dear Lord, I ask that you'll be with those here, be with guided and directed in the way that you would have them to go, that your Holy Spirit will be a part of their lives. Continue to watch over each and every one of us, and thank you for all that you've done, and thank you for giving us another day of perfect life. Would you bring your name?
Amen.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with ever being, just as for all. Honor the Texas flag, and pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Do we have any public comments? Commissioner Aiken.
Yes, sir. So, um, thank you Pastor for adding them in the prayer. Calhoun County suffered the loss of Commissioner David Hall this past week. He died in his sleep. He was fifty-four years old. Those of us who serve on the court probably met Commissioner Hall at conferences and, and, uh, you know, it's just something that he left at an early age. And, and, uh, this is secondary to, in November of last year, Calhoun County lost their judge. And so their, their community is still hurting from that. The reason I know so much about this is, is Judge Vern Lissy hails from Pough, Texas, and, uh, and so been in contact with the judge and, and of course expressed our, our concerns and prayers. And, uh, it, it is something that, uh, those of us who are blessed to serve, uh, we don't know the day like anybody else. And, and so, uh, just if the public would remember Calhoun County in your prayers.
Dr. Creach?
I just wanted to let the community know that we are making significant efforts toward the relocation and the restoration of the Tyler Hendrick house. And Preservation Texas has pointed out to us the advantages of a historic home being located on private property. And along with that, Commissioner Charlie, the owner of the Polly Waiteville mansion, has expressed an interest in allowing the Tyler house to be placed on their newly acquired property near the Polly mansion. So the house will be located near a grove of live oak trees. It's a very beautiful spot. And interestingly, De'Al Tyner's wife Connie was the Polly's granddaughter, so it's appropriate that the two houses might be next to each other. Having the two houses near each other will allow us to tell a hundred years of the history of Wilson County between the two houses, from the eighteen forties to the nineteen forties. And since, uh, I last talked with the Commission here, I have gotten another Tyner diary to transcribe. This was from eighteen ninety-eight to nineteen hundred. And two diaries that were written by the two Hendricks, who owned the house after the Tyners. So we now have some amazing documentation between the Polly papers and the Tyner and the Hendricks diaries of those periods of the history of Wilson County and the physical evidence of the houses. The Tyler Hendricks house will likely be donated to the Southern Springs Historical Museum, a nonprofit organization. An oversight of the house fundraising and grant writing will be managed by committee under the auspices of the Southern Springs Historical Museum and property owner, Chief Commissioner. We appreciate so much the county's willingness to allow us, to allow the house to be moved to that nearby county land. However, we think it would be in the best interest of all the parties, uh, in this, in the best course of action, to move the house to be near the Polly mansion. If you have any questions, feel free to call me, and I'm accounting to my little note here, a rendition of the Tyler house, and how it will look after it's going to be restored. And this was done by Preservation Texas. It's gonna be a beautiful addition, I think, to our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Certificates of completion, awards, and mine. C J Security and Privacy General Role for Audrey Kayle and John Palacio. Tax Cybersecurity Awareness Training for Amanda Bravo. John Aiken, Kristen Lakers, Gary Morton, Christina Moose, Gabrielle Landryam, Haley Robb, Gloria Bailey. S O S Cybersecurity Training for Audrey Kayle. Richard Losales, Oda Marero, Rose Levas, Sarah Pettis, Rose Pruski, and Francis Muziak. Agenda item number six, we have Miss Brenda Trevino for six A, nine AM, twenty twenty five tax rate hearing. I'm sorry, did I miss one? Okay. There's nobody here, I apologize, we skipped over five extension contributor. There's nobody here from Agri-Lie, so that's for y'all to read over. And now we'll move over to agenda item number six.
Good morning, Judge. The proposed tax rate for this year is point four zero five nine six one. The no new revenue tax rate is proposed at point three eight eight two six five, and the voter approval tax rate is point four zero five nine six one. The no new revenue tax rate is the tax rate for the twenty twenty five tax year that will raise the same amount of property tax revenue for Wilson County from the same properties in both the twenty-four and twenty-five tax year. The voter approval tax rate is the highest tax rate that Wilson County may adopt without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate. The proposed tax, uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, this public hearing now is to be held so that if anyone wants to support or oppose or have any questions, Judge, so I'll turn it over to you to open.
Do we have any public comments? Anyone wanna make a comment on six A, hearing? They're done, alright. We move on to six B, discuss take action, vote on salary expenses and other allowances of elected county or precinct officers, L G C one fifty-two point zero one three.
Yeah, so the notice was publicized in the Wilson County News and on our website and in the proposed budget that you have, that Wilson County is proposing a thirty-five-hundred-dollar pay increase for all elected officials and county employees for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, and this was at your direction during the budget workshop.
I'll entertain a motion on six E.
Where did the sheet go? Yeah. Don't want to be specific. Make a motion that Wilson County accept as we determine in our budget hearing, the thirty-five-hundred-dollar pay increase for all elected officials and county employees for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Second. Second, okay. Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, second by Commissioner Morton. Do we have any other discussion regarding agenda item six B? You're none, I'll call for the vote. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Eyes have it, motion passes. Six E, discuss take action about budget of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, L G C one eleven point zero zero eight.
I have provided to you, uh, the most recent updated proposed budget, uh, which is in front of you. We had our budget workshop, and then we had a budget hearing. Um, there were five changes made to the original proposed budget. Those five changes included the Historical Commission Fund, twelve oh three increased by twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, the amount of a contribution for the American City Festival, um, was inadvertently left off, so I did include that. Uh, the Fire Marshal Department, under the General Fund, Department zero four eleven, increased to include uniforms, conferences, uh, and public education for a total of thirty-eight-hundred dollars. In the Elections Department, twelve hundred dot oh four six oh, there was an employee's health insurance that was removed to be replaced with a health supplement, which was a decrease in the budget of five thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars and eight cents. In the Tax Assessor's Office, uh, Department zero four seven two, under the General Fund, there was longevity removed for an employee who's no longer here, for twelve hundred dollar decrease. And then in the Maintenance Department, uh, under the General Fund, Department zero five zero one, there was an employee's health insurance that was removed and replaced with the health supplement for a decrease of five thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and eight cents. All of these changes were adjusted by either increasing or decreasing the line item in non-departmental for the reserve or unexpected expenses. Um, the bottom line of the entire budget changed by the twenty-five hundred dollars because the General Fund has to transfer that twenty-five hundred dollars to the Historical Commission, uh, fund. Other than that, there were no other changes provided to be by Judge Whitman, um, in, in the previous proposed budget that you have.
Any other discussion for, I'll call for the vote. I'll entertain a motion for six E.
I'll make a motion to adopt the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, L G C one 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 point zero zero eight.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Do we have any other discussion regarding six E? You're none, I'll call for the vote. All those favorites say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Eyes have it, motion passes. Six D, discuss take action, vote to gratify property tax increase, L G C one 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 point zero zero eight, Stephen.
Although the local government code calls it an increase, if the county is decreasing the tax rate, um, that is the appropriate terminology. And so I have presented Commissioner Aiken with the, uh, motion according to that local government code in order to read the motion. Um, once the vote is taken, Judge, you have the order for you to read, um, I just handed it to you, I think.
On this eighth day of September.
He's gotta say the motion first. Either to do the motion, take the vote, or read the order.
I make a motion that the property tax rate be decreased by the adoption of a tax rate of point four zero five nine six one, which is effectively a four point five percent increase in the no new revenue tax rate and a two point one two percent decrease in the twenty twenty-five property tax rate.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Morton. Do we have any other discussion regarding? Six.
D.
You're none, I'll call for the vote. All those favorites say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Eyes have it, now you want me to read them? Alright, I'm gonna get ahead. On the eighth day of September twenty twenty-five, at a meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Wilson County, Texas, the Court considered setting tax rates for the twenty twenty-five tax year. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operation than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will effectively be decreased by two point one, two point one two percent and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a hu- one hundred thousand dollar home by approximately sixty-one dollars. It is therefore ordered that the tax rate for the twenty twenty-five tax year is set at point four zero five nine six one. It is further ordered that taxes are levied for the twenty twenty-five fiscal tax year signed this eighth day of September twenty twenty-five. Henry O. Whitman, Wilson County Judge. Is this because of the new law that went into effect on property taxes to be increased? No? Okay. Move to, uh, agenda item six E, discuss and take action, vote to set twenty twenty-five tax rate E one, M and O, twenty twenty-five tax rate at point three nine six one eight two.
Yes, Judge, so the, uh, tax rate that you just ratified is point four zero five, uh, is a combination of the M and O rate of point three nine six one eight two and the debt INS rate of point zero zero nine seven seven nine, so you do have to vote on each one of those individually.
Entertain a motion on six E.
Make a motion that we accept M and O twenty twenty-five tax rate being point three nine six one eight two.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Morton. Do we have any other discussion regarding six E one? You're none, I'll call for the vote. All those favorites say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Eyes have it, motion passes. Now we move to six E two. INS twenty twenty-five tax rate at point zero zero nine seven seven nine.
Make a motion to accept the tax rate INS for twenty twenty-five, uh, zeros, or point zero zero nine seven seven nine.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Is there any other discussion regarding six E two? You're none, I call for the vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Eyes have it, motion passes. Alright, thank you. Agenda item number seven, we have Stephanie Callan, Comino Real S U program, discuss and take action on Recovery Awareness Month Proclamation.
Proclamation for National Recovery Month. This month we recognize the more than twenty-one million Americans and Americans with substance use disorder. We accept its support. Courage, hope, and resolve as they seek new beginning and help countless others find pa- pathways to their meaning. People of recovery serve in every sector of society's and business leaders, public servants, community leaders, and more. During National Recovery Month, we celebrate the contributions and we honor the loved ones who have supported them on the recovery journey. Substance use disorder impacts Americans in communities nationwide. Too many families have lost their children, siblings, parents, and friends to substance misuse and overdose. Every loss is a painful cost to action. With adequate support and resource, recovery is possible. Our nation is stronger than people of recovery do well. During National Recovery Month, we support everyone in their journey to and during recovery. We recommend people with live, live long, successful and healthy lives, and we thank them for their contributions to our coun- country. And we continue to ensure that those battling substance use disorder are supported. Wilson County here by proclaiming September twenty twenty-five as National Recovery Month. I call upon all citizens, government, agencies, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and other groups to take actions to promote recovery and improve the health to, of our city. Wilson County supports the National Recovery Month by promoting the possibility of recovery for substance use disorder in this and every month. Recognizing the importance of education on and preventing the substance use disorder and the critical importance of effectiveness in treat- treatment of recovery services for substance use disorder. Applying the countless national, state, and local community organizations for their work and recovery issues and honoring and celebrating the achievements of one more than twenty-one million people in the United States who are in recovery. The meaning healthcare professionals and peers who help others engage on their own journey in, into recovery. The tens of million, tens of millions of recovery allies who support these people who the recovery community organizations and providers who continue to support recovery support services and the work done to combat precise symptoms associated with treatment and recovery. So, um, I work with Comino Real, the S U program. I'm a recovery coach there. I, um, have that experience. So the S U program offers, um, is intensive outpatient. We have a group twice a week, counseling, drug testing, and a recovery coach. This year, we've had, um, seven clients who were successfully discharged. We have people who come in, we're all probation, CPSC, self-referred.
My Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to accept this Awareness Month proclamation.
I'll make a motion to accept the Comino Real S U program Recovery Awareness Month proclamation.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Morton, seconded by Commissioner King. Do we have any other discussion regarding this agenda item? You're none, I'll call for the vote. All those favorites say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Eyes have it, motion passes. Y'all wanna get a picture of this? Do you have the original?
I have the next one, you have the next one.
You got another one? Alright. Okay. Alright, so agenda item number eight, we have the Oracle Islands, Comino Real, discuss take action on awareness, uh, of the announced presentation of proclamation for September Awareness Month.
Good morning, everyone. Whereas September marks Suicide Prevention Month as a time to remember the lives lost to suicide, the millions who have struggled from suicide thoughts, and the individuals, families, and communities that have been impacted. And whereas during the month of September, approximately one point three million people in the U.S. who have suicide thoughts, a hundred forty-two thousand will attempt suicide, and four thousand will die by suicide. Whereas Texas has a population of twenty-nine million people, it is both the second largest state population and the second highest number of suicide deaths in the U.S. Whereas Texas's suicide rate for high school students is higher than the national rate. Whereas the past year has presented our communities with challenges and led to the transitions that are expected and unexpected. Welcome or not, hanging, selling, disoriented, and shot down. Whereas knowing signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate with someone, uh, they're concerned about, and reaching out to local resources. And whereas we know that connecting, working with, and supporting with one another can help prepare us for the future. And whereas all Texans are urged to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as a drive towards zero suicides. And whereas the month of September is recognized across the United States as a suicide prevention Awareness Month, provides the opportunity to educate our community about the warning signs of suicide and how to reach out and connect to those that are experiencing an emotional crisis.
Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to accept this proclamation.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Comino Real Wilson County Suicide Awareness, Awareness Proclamation for September twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Do we have any others, further discussion on agenda item number eight? You're none, I'll call for the vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Eyes have it, motion passes. Now therefore, I, Henry O. Whitman, County Judge, Commissioners of Wilson County do hereby, on this day of September eighth, proclaim the month of September twenty twenty-five as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Wilson County.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, discuss and take action on approving the twenty twenty-six Commissioner Court meeting dates.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six Commissioner Court meeting dates for every second and fourth Monday of every month at nine AM. Except for the following, May twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-six, meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-six at nine AM.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Morton. Do we have any other discussion regarding agenda item number nine? You're none, I'll call for the vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Eyes have it, motion passes. Agenda item number ten, discuss take action on approving the twenty twenty-six County holidays.
Looks like they remain the same as last year.
I saw your intent is back in there.
Entertain a motion on agenda item number ten.
I'll make a motion to approve the county, twenty twenty-six county holidays.
Check.
Motion made by Commissioner Morton, seconded by Commissioner King. Any other discussion regarding this agenda item? You're none, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, I just have it, motion passed. Agenda item number eleven, we have Mr. Anthony DeVallo, Wilson County Historical Commission, discussing, take action on approving historical commission's plan to relocate and store the historic Wilson County School ledgers currently housed in the county judge's conference room area. Mr. DeVallo.
Thank you. Exhibit A. There's about, there's about fifty of them. There's fifty-seven of these volumes, we can go to the next slide. Uh, I'm also here with Dr. Creech, uh, who's going to share a little bit of information, um, about kind of the value of what we find in these fifty-seven volumes that are currently maintained in three plastic containers stored in the conference room area of the judge. Back in the day, the, the county was responsible for schooling our children, and there was a, um, a county board, and so, and those, those records are currently maintained by the county judge as mentioned in the conference room. Um, but, but these records are really rich with information. They start about nineteen hundred-ish, nineteen oh-three, and run to about nineteen fifty. There's a, uh, this, this particular book here is the school minutes, uh, school board minutes, uh, from the sixties. Um, so just, just out of curiosity, when we, we hear, you know, mom and dad used to tell us when we were growing up about, you know, the long walk that they had to go to school uphill in the snow, so I just was perusing, uh, in preparation for this morning, uh, cruising, how many miles did the poor kid have to sit through when they were, uh, in the post-school district in nineteen fifty-nine? Any guesses? When they were on the school bus, how far they would have to go? Would it surprise you that the morning route was fifty-eight miles? One way? So, it's amazing the kind of information that we find in these school records. I'm going to ask Dr. Creech to share just a little bit of the information that she's been able to glean from these records.
The volumes have been really instrumental, not only in my research, but the delivery of historical association has just published a book on the Wanamaker School, which is close, they're close to the Brenham, and they use these records extensively. There's also a group of, uh, people that are doing the research on the Cruz Cemetery, and they also, um, are using this to find out about the Cruz School, who was in attendance at the school to try to identify who might be in the cemetery. In my own research, um, I'm doing on, uh, the Freedom Colony families in Wilson County after the Civil War, this has been so helpful to me because it lists in nineteen oh-three, all the colored schools that were, they called them colored schools then, that were in Wilson County, and so I know the names of all the families that were associated with those schools, and probably those were the ones that were associated with the Freedom Colonies also. Uh, so for example, one of the things that I found out was in nineteen oh-three, at the Settling Springs Stevenson Colony School, Common School Number Nine, there were a hundred and ten black students enrolled in that school. And then by nineteen forty-six, when things began to consolidate, there were only three, and one of those people is still living, I'm still trying to get his picture. So they, these records have just been really helpful in identifying the people who lived in Wilson County from nineteen oh-three, who will be happy to get housing and stuff.
So the proposal, uh, the next slide, the proposal is to transfer the books from the plastic containers that they're in, the conference room, uh, the judge's conference room, uh, to the, uh, Wilson County Archives. Wilson County Archives, uh, just as a, a reminder, it is a county entity, it belongs to, uh, to you, um, it is being managed by the Director of, of Wilson County Libraries under the auspices of the Wilson County Historical Commission. Uh, the idea is to transfer those to the archives. One of our requests from the Historical Commission is also to, to procure a fireproof cabinet, um, size to be determined, but these are the kinds of things that we would want to house in that, in that fireproof cabinet, uh, to protect them. Some of these, uh, ledgers, I think Dr. Creech would say he probably needs some work, uh, and so the, uh, under, under the auspices of the archives, we'd also seek grants to do preservation for the archives, and so that's the request is to move these from the judge's, uh, conference room over to the Wilson County Archives so that we can begin to, uh, properly archive them and preserve them for future use.
Are you needing like a, a safe, a gun safe or whatever?
It's already budgeted.
So it's budgeted, okay, all right. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion on agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the Historical Commission's plan to relocate the store, the historic Wilson County School ledgers, uh, from the judge's conference room to the archive building.
Sure.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. Any other discussion regarding this agenda item? You're none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, I just have it, motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate you.
Agenda item number twelve, we have the Brendan Fergino County Attorney, discuss possibly award the following bid, this is code of twelve A, twenty-six dash one thousand dash flexible base materials, asphalt material, and emulsion bid.
Yes, we went out for, uh, procurement for, uh, annual materials, you all received a copy of the bid tabulation, um, the vendors that were tabulated, um, were Nine O Transport and Sales, Aggregate Lovers LLC, Addis Osso Materials, Bobcat Materials LLC, Colorado Materials LTD, Ron Tech Materials Inc., Enviro Tech Services LLC, Ergon Asphalt and Emollients, GEM Materials Inc., and Golden Construction Materials LLC. So, um, you have the big population there for you, and it is at the court's discretion of who you ought to award the contract. In the past, just to remind, uh, the public in San Diego, which you are aware, uh, the court has previously considered and voted to approve, um, all of them because each of you in your respective precincts utilize different vendors, and so one may not make sense for the other, um, in terms of location, uh, so that is an option for you to consider as well.
So they can, won't they all?
They can go to have all, one, none, two, three, it's, it's totally at the court's discretion.
Whatever works for you, Commissioner.
We've always done all of them in the past, I think it all provides us the flexibility to get the best price for our precinct because some are, what's high in mine is low in his because they're over that way, so I, I, I mean, there's a couple of them in there, I, you know, don't know how much we'd use them, but I guess we could try it and see how it works, I, I have no objection of awarding it to all of them.
Yeah, like Commissioner Martin said, even if you were to award it to all of them, it doesn't, and correct me if I'm wrong this year, but it doesn't, um, hold you to ensuring that you purchase, but it gives you that option in the event that one of your, um, continuous vendors is out of supply and you need to go to one, because I do need to remind you that once you approve, uh, whoever you're going to award to, that would be, or those would be, be only approved vendors for material, and you would not be able to purchase from another vendor that's not approved by the court.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve this, all the twenty-six dash one thousand flex base material, asphalt material, and emulsion bid.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Do we have any other discussion regarding twelve A, agenda twelve B? You're none, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, I just have it, motion passed. We need to twelve B, twenty-five dash one thousand two, both gasoline and diesel bid.
Yes, so you also have a bid tabulation there for you, and this, uh, was from, uh, we received two, one from Three L USA, DDA, Three L Energy Solutions, and one from Mintex Oil, LLD. I'll read it off, since there were just two, and then I'll pass it around, and some will have a copy of those with you. ULS, LLD Red Dye, two Opera Diesel by Three L USA, the San Antonio distributor rack price per gallon as of July first was two dollars and twenty-eight cents, their profit margin was point five zero seven two, and their bid price per gallon was two dollars and seventy-nine six two cents, and their brand is Flint Hills. As compared to Mintex Oil, uh, for the same item, the San Antonio rack price per gallon as of July first was one dollar ninety-five cents, their profit margin was nineteen cents, for a bid price per gallon of two dollars and point one four zero one. Their, uh, Highway Diesel from Three L USA, rack price as of seven one was two dollars and twenty-eight cents, their profit margin was seventy-five cents, point seven five zero nine, their bid price per gallon was three dollars, three, three point zero three six four. For Mintex Oil, their Highway Diesel as of July first was two dollars and twenty-eight cents, their profit margin was nineteen cents, and their price per gallon was two point four seven five five. And then the unleaded gasoline eighty-seven octane for Three L USA, as of July first, the rack price was one dollar and ninety-five cents, um, their profit margin was one dollar and eighteen cents, their price per gallon three point one four two three. And for Mintex Oil for the same product, as of July first, was two dollars and twenty-eight cents, with a profit margin of nineteen cents, for a price per gallon of two point four seven nine zero. There was some discussion or some, uh, comments regarding delivery tanks provided by the vendors. It appears that, let's see. Midtex, uh, Midtex did provide a quote for a five-hundred gallon unleaded gasoline tank, uh, it was an additional fourteen cents, uh, more in profit margin, um, so the nineteen cents plus the fourteen cents to include the tank would be thirty-three cent profit margin. For the Opera Diesel, it was an additional fourteen cent profit margin, so that would also make it thirty-three cents of the profit margin, and the same for the diesel tank. Uh, the installation of the tank would be two hundred and twenty-five dollars for each tank. Delivery tanks provided by Three L USA, they didn't break it down in terms of their additional profit margin, so, um, they just gave us a block price bid of one hundred and fifty dollars for each of those tanks that I discussed, with an installation of two hundred dollars. And just for contingency, we have used Mintex Oil, uh, in the past, I do not believe we have used Three L USA, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't recognize that vendor yet.
And one of the current bidders chose not to bid this year.
That is really unusual, I haven't received.
I called them and asked them, and I haven't gotten an answer as to what happened, but it is what it is.
My salesman said that he wasn't aware that they weren't contacted to rebid, so.
I, I don't like Three L's markup, I think that's excessive, uh, but I hesitate not to hand them something, because what do we do if Midtex can't make the delivery?
And that's the question that I wanted to ask, in the event that we went with one bidder who has served us in the past, and they have a supply issue, and we only have one bidder, what are our options to be able to keep our sheriff's department moving, our precincts moving?
Well, I mean, you're, you're limiting yourself to the bid that you accept, and so you have to make every effort to have them actually comply with the contract. If not, then, uh, they could be in breach of contract, or if they've not, they're not fulfilling their duties of supplying what we, uh, asked them to, then we can look at terminating and then look at other sources, but we can't just say, well, you can't do it, let's go and ask somebody, because we need it right now in an emergency, we really can't do that. We have to, uh, stick with the bid that, uh, the award of whoever's supposed to.
So what if we have a hurricane October first, and there's no fuel in San Antonio? Is that, is that enough of an emergency where we can use our credit cards?
Uh, yes, I, I would say if there's a hurricane that is
Because that's, that's the whole deal, is, is that, we've got to have fuel available, mainly during emergencies, and, and obviously, I mean, he's going to be running extra vehicles probably during that period of time, and extra shifts and what have you, and so, and so will we for that matter, or a tornado or whatever it is, and if we run out of fuel, we're out of fuel, so we've got to be able to get it somewhere. I'm not, I'm not saying anybody else may have it either, but we're going to get it wherever we can get it from.
No, I mean, if, if you, if there is an emergency like that, it deals with the safety and of the public, of course, we do whatever we need to do to protect the public, but we're also giving this company the exclusive right to provide, um, uh, the fuel, and so to call them up and say, we're having a hurricane, what are you going to do to take care of us right now? And if they say, um, we can't, then, I mean, we can always reevaluate the contract, and then we do whatever, you know, is necessary, um, to protect the safety of the public at that particular time, and if that means going to somebody else, then we need to do what we need to do.
And I would also, um, just remind the court as well, um, this is our, since I've been here for seven years, this is the seventh time that we've gone out for proposal at the same time of the year, every year, for material and fuel, and so it is not, uh, the county, we do it as a courtesy if we have vendors to let them know, hey, it's posted on the website for you to go and, and pull the bid packet, but we are not held responsible for making sure that somebody turns in the bid, or that they receive it, it is the vendor's responsibility to pull the bid packet, either from my office or from the website. Um, and if it's the same vendors that do it every year, they should know at the same time of the year, every year, that we go out for bid for this. Uh, so I just want to make sure that every, um, vendor is aware, for transparency, that, um, it is their responsibility to make sure it is advertised in the paper and on our website.
That being said, Great Lakes, this was their first year they've ever serviced us, and they're out of Houston, and they're a very large company, so they're saying they, whoever, whatever got the email didn't, their salesman was not aware that it was time to rebid, so.
They were where last year, when they did it last year, and their contract is a one-year term, so they, they were
It's in the contract that it ends in a year.
Somebody dropped the ball there, not a
Yeah. Right, just saying.
I agree, I don't like Three L's markup either, but as we have done in the past, I think that we accept both vendors, and I'll make a motion of that effect. Well, I, I mean, we found it useful in that
We don't know what's going to happen.
I was the one that was dealing with Midtex, sheriff's department had a supply issue and couldn't get fuel, and Midtex was able to take it to them, and so
I do remember there, um, to Commissioner Martin's point, there was a time, and I don't remember, and quote me, and I don't remember what specific item it was, but I believe it might have been a material item that the vendor was completely out of, and, and one of the commissioners absolutely needed it for a job, um, and there was not a supplier on the approved list that, that had it, and I consulted with the county attorney at that time, and it was in the best interest of the county, uh, financially, for us to, uh, grab that material, uh, based on, you know, what was in the best interest of the county at the time. So there is room in the event that Midtex is completely out of fuel, we can't get it, we'll consult with the attorney's office and report, and we simply wouldn't leave it, the county, in the faster, so.
Commissioners, your motion for both?
To accept both bidders.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner King. Do you have any other discussion on twelve B? You're none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, I just have it, motion passed. Agenda item thirteen, we have this here on, discuss and take action on approval of cartel solutions interface contract.
Yes, good morning. We are asking for approval to enter into this contract with Carpel, uh, interface. They provide, um, data interface for prosecutors. Uh, they're pretty much a standard in the area and they allow us to have access to data. They store our data and allows, uh, our office, uh, in the prosecution of misdemeanors and many crimes to, uh, to be able to access the information prosecutors, uh, paralegals to be able to, uh, interface with law enforcement, uh, not only within our county but other counties. And so we're asking for approval of a contract. It's a year, uh, it's a one-year contract for twenty-five thousand dollars and there are five thousand dollar payments, um, making this fee per year. So the total cost of the contract is thirty thousand dollars. So we're asking for approval, uh, to enter into this contract, uh, with these law prosecutors.
And is this in the budget or is this?
I don't know, is it?
No, I'm sure. No, I don't agree with the, uh, not for that amount and that's for this fiscal year?
No, it's for the next year, uh, um.
When would the first payment be here?
The first payment is due upon entry, uh, signing of the contract. Um, they don't have a starting date, uh.
Okay, let me refresh my question. So is it in next year's budget?
Uh, not for that amount. Um, I have, uh, Ms. Nettles gave me a price of fifteen thousand for computer software, um, but I don't have any of those dollars unless you're going to use PTP funds, but I don't have any of that.
Is the one you're talking about the law line was on?
No, uh.
We're going to have, uh, access to data system, but that's it. The contract that I have, it's a, it simply has a starting date.
Uh, no, not in a PTP fund either. So Ms. Nettles gave me a total of fifteen thousand for computer software and support, um, but I, I don't have that dollar amount in the budget.
I think we need, yeah, I think we need to sort of that out.
That's fine. I'll get, uh, detailed information as to whether or not this one contract. Or what funds the attorney's asked me to review. So.
Can we revisit it?
With that, we will request that it be tabled and I will get the, uh, detailed information from the next meeting.
We can certainly table it, but we'll have to make sure we're bringing it back up the next meeting.
How about we just no action required?
That's my suggestion, no action required. Gen item number fourteen, this is Lusarato permitting development director, fourteen A utility permit, one permit, eight one nine, Sunco, through San Diego County Road two twenty-five, review approved.
Yes, good morning. Uh, this two twenty permit was submitted by Sunco wanting to buy and has been reviewed by Commissioner King. Uh, they are proposing the board beneath County Road two twenty-five.
I'm going to make a motion to approve permit eight nineteen for Sunco, uh, County Road two twenty-five to bore.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion on fourteen A one? Here now, call for the vote, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, motion passes. Fourteen B, Tampa Water Line Permit One, Permit one thirteen, Tetra Technologies, Bar City Two, County Road two oh six, two oh seven, two thirteen. And this says informational, no action required.
Absolutely. This is just to let the public know that there will be Tampa Water Line going beneath County Road two oh six, two oh seven, two thirteen. Uh, this line has been approved and reviewed by Commissioner King as well.
They're doing a lot of fracking out there, so.
That's it, thank you. Move to gen item number fifteen, we have Mr. Jason Tally, um, along with Mr. Hereon and Mr. Fox, if we need him, fifteen A discuss, take action on resolution and certificate of formation of the Wilson County Industrial Development Corporation. Mr. Tally, I guess we need to explain, we visited this last time, but we left some things out.
Yes, so actually, uh, at the last, uh, I think the last commission meeting that, um, we entered approved the formation of this industrial corporation, but then realized that the resolution and the certificate formation was not in the package. So all we're doing now is we've provided that information in your package, um, all that everyone chimed in if you would like, uh, if there's anything to discuss in the documents, I mean, pretty boilerplate from the standpoint of any form, but the certificate formation, I'm looking to the Secretary of State for the filing.
Uh, yes, uh, I reviewed and Mr. Fox is the one who's preparing these documents because he's very, um, he has experience in doing this. Um, so the certificate of formation is very basic. It creates the corporation. Um, it's very much like the planning department. It is an entity that has, uh, the ability to make decisions regarding development, but ultimately the decision comes to Commissioner's Court. Um, the, uh, Board of Directors are the actual commissioners, are the commissioners themselves. So, um, and you have to be a commissioner to serve on the board. So, uh, bylaws are very specific as far as how this, uh, development corporation is run. It is governed by the, uh, government code. Uh, it is a public entity, so the meetings, whenever they're held, they're public meetings, uh, and any decisions they make, of course, would come back to the, the Commissioner's Court for final approval. So all appears in order. There's, uh, some standard forms, but I do believe they comply with the, uh, uh, the local government code regarding, um, the creation of these development corporations. It is funded as the court wants to fund it. There is no pay for the, for the, uh, the directors. Um, so, uh, to consider, uh, requesting bonds, grants, whatever, uh, the board thinks is, is beneficial to the county in terms of economic development. Ms. Nettles?
We covered it all.
Okay.
So really, uh, we just wanted to make sure that the resolution for approval and then the certificate of formation that will be filed with Secretary of State in the package, so that was provided. We do have Mr. Fox on standby, we need to have him call in. I know he's been on the phone before and you listened to his comments. That's, that's all we're doing today.
Part of it also, uh, and I believe that's on the agenda, is to approve Mr. Fox as, uh, counsel for Wilson County, uh, for the formation of this corporation. So we are seeking his services. I, I've asked about the cost, but, um, I believe he's willing to, I don't know.
That's on the engagement, by the way, to be the next item, uh, so I guess we'll get to that item once you complete this, so we will discuss that.
So let's go ahead and take action on, no action on fifteen A, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the resolution and certificate of formation for the Wilson County Industrial Development Corporation.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Girdola. Do we have any other discussion regarding fifteen A? Here now, call for the vote, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, aye, second, vote passes. Now we move to fifteen B, discuss and take action on approving Lance Fox as counsel for Wilson County Industrial Development Corporation for formation purposes.
So, so simply he would be engaged just to get the, um, certificate filed with the Secretary of State. He would more than, um, he would be happy to even attend the first meeting of the Industrial Development Corporation just to make sure that officers are elected properly, et cetera. Uh, he's doing this at no cost, but cost, and that's indicated in the engagement. I told Mr. Fox that it would be wise that if you're going to help in this process, he has the official engagement letter with the county, so that way he is officially returning on this particular process. Now, if and when down the road, the Industrial Development Corporation refuses to issue an additional letter from one of the companies we talked about, which is Core Global, then at that point in time, um, you can choose to use county attorneys for your, um, advisors or if it was needed at some point, you could use outside counsel. But for Mr. Fox, he indicated that any fees associated with that could be built into the bond and you wouldn't have out-of-pocket costs for the corporation. So he said, um, we've done and you can include those costs without, kind of outside counsel if you get to that point after the corporation was formed. But this is just simply approving him for engagement for this filing.
I will make motion fifteen B.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of engagement for Lance Fox as counsel for the Wilson County Industrial Development Corporation.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner King. Any other discussion regarding, attend item fifteen B. Here now, call for the vote, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, aye, second, motion passes. All right, thank you.
And when we're through with court, I just need to know where to sign on one of these certificates. I can hear, one more thing on that.
Sure.
On the certificate formation, there is, uh, two signature lines for incorporators. So the judge has one line that he signs and then two others. Per the statute, as Mr. Fox, uh, provided to me, it says that the incorporators can be any voter in Wilson County. So it doesn't even technically have to be commissioners, but obviously since you're present, uh, you could sign on those two lines, Mr. Ryan, if you just, you can do that before you dismiss that.
Yeah, thank you. Gen item number sixteen, we have Sheriff's clerk, Sheriff's progress report.
Nothing, please.
All right. Gen item number seventeen, we have Janie Martinez, County Clerk, discuss and take action on Commissioner Corbin Minnis. I don't think, entertain motion to accept the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Girdola. Any other discussion on gen item seventeen? Here now, call for the vote, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, aye, second, motion passes. We move to gen item number eighteen, that's presentation payroll, personnel changes by the law. Human resource.
George Casillas was hired as a resident for three sixty, making twenty dollars an hour of twenty thousand six hundred annually, if that is what you're saying. Carl Fowler was hired as a Wilson County Fire Marshal, making some six thousand one eight twenty annually, effective August twenty seventh. I'm fired from this year, so.
Good evening, Carl Fowler, some of you guys I know, some of you all know. You guys, someone here, moving forward for the building of this city in San Antonio. Got any things, want to take a look at?
How things going so far? Good?
So far so good.
It's kind of good.
Didn't, didn't, I just get together, been settled in, uh, we're now regulated by the Texas Commission on Power Protection and, uh, that's that moving forward with the, uh, equal process.
Glad to have you, sir.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Long overdue.
Thank you.
Is Brendan Dovino, our county auditor, discuss and take action on county bills?
Um, I've reviewed total bills of five hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Uh, I know the bill that I had for Cooper equipment.
Mm-hmm.
That's supposed to be split up between all four of us. I had to let the ladies know downstairs.
You did, okay.
I'll go correct.
And it's currently under yours, okay.
It's four hundred and something dollars, that's for distributor truck.
Did she print it already before she printed this? It's still in here?
It's still in here on, under me. She's going to get it corrected, she told me.
Oh, okay.
The email.
But I mean, she printed these this morning is what I'm asking. Does she change it already?
Uh, she might have, yeah, I'll bet.
This is all I'm going to read, let's see.
Cooper, yeah, so should have an asterisk next to it, so it gets split up between everybody.
Oh, okay.
But it's not.
Okay, I'll make sure.
And that was for hoses and stuff for the old distributor because they break all the time, so, uh, just let the court know.
This office equipment for the EOC, that's new stuff for the new office or what?
Uh. Um, yes, um, Intec, I, uh, Intec is, uh, I believe they're starting to get toner and stuff. That's who we think we buy toner from, so. I believe they're starting to build up their, they have a move in date, I believe, uh, before the end of the month, I'm mistaken. Or at least that was last I was full, but it may have changed.
I think it's going to get pushed up again.
Oh, okay.
Not, not by much, but.
Okay. I know, uh, the furniture is coming, um, from DeWitt and, um, Ms. Joanna from DeWitt emailed me last week that she was full, I believe, by emergency management, but it was going to be at the end of September and they were planning on having the furniture brought in by then, so that was the last I had.
Did I buy some of the ordered shirts from, I'd love it because I see something from Mary, Brandon Mary, I don't know if that's coming out.
That may have been, uh, your infant defense coordinator's room or anything.
Yeah, you're right.
The five thousand dollars would be split. The, you were saying that the Cooper equipment bill was for the old distributor truck and so.
Yep.
It'll just be taken out of each of our departments equally?
Yes.
Yep.
It was four hundred or something, that's where, I kind of looked at you, I don't know what the five thousand you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm looking at Cooper Equipment Company and your budget, five thousand, eighteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. I thought that you said that there were bills incurred, less that's on something else, but.
You're doing whatever, yeah. Cooper? I got four hundred and.
Four eighty-three seventy.
Baby, my eyes are letting me read the wrong one.
You need my glasses?
What glasses?
Jeff, they're right there.
That's a good way to do it. Yeah, okay, forty-three seventy.
They're a dollar at the dollar store.
Well.
You stepped right over that.
There isn't a law that says that it has to be point two, you know, I'm more of a point fourteen type of guy on the computer.
I can certainly, uh, blow it up on the coffee machine for the time being.
Yeah.
Put it on eleven by seventeen.
Yeah.
Forty-six font.
I think you are making it smaller, because I'm having a hard time seeing it.
All right. Commissioner Valletta, in motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills for five hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Martin. Do we have any other discussion regarding gen item nineteen?
Just right quick, I did finish up the sale of equipment. A lot of it was mine, but also there was, uh, three pieces of county shared equipment. Those three pieces sold for approximately twenty thousand dollars, so we'll each be getting not quite five thousand each to our, added back to our reserve, so.
That was the ones that you had out for auction.
Yeah, yeah, it closed Friday. I'll, I'll be sending all the information this morning, if I can muddle through it all. I could drop four thousand emails on this stuff Friday.
That was, that was the old tree truck, the old chipper.
Chipper and the forklift, yeah.
That's been due, and with the purple one auction, we need it.
Good deal, good deal.
I get the auction notifications and, and whenever I looked at the sale price, I'm like, okay.
Yeah, trucks are popular. The, the tree truck sold for eighty-six hundred and something.
All right, is there any other discussion here? None, let's call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Ayes have it, motion passes. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Girdola. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, we are adjourned, and it is ten twelve A.